I just reminded to make sure that you might surround Commissioner Law.
Present.
Commissioner Rexro.
Present.
Chairman Russell.
Here.
Commissioner Ross. Commissioner Ashland. Commissioner Lautner.
Your.
Commissioner Lautner.
Assent.
Before we, we have an agenda set, we'll have public comment and commissioner comments, and then we will review the process for today. Make sure we all know how we'll do it and we can address Commissioner Lautner's concerns at that time.
We take a five-minute break and set up as discussed on Tuesday. We have tables, we talked about sliding that table back, can we just take a five-minute break and set up?
We will, we will do what I just said, which is take public comment, commissioner comment, and we will review how this board of commissioners, all six of us, want to handle it.
And don't scare the board before I saw.
We're not moving that cable anywhere, there's too much wires. Is there any public comment this morning?
It falls right in.
It fell apart. Any commissioner comment this morning?
Pass.
Commissioner Lautner?
Yeah, as discussed on the other day when we set up this meeting, I'm going to just a five-minute break, slide this table back a little bit, set those white tables you have ready for the commissioner elects to be able to see the faces of the candidates we're going to interview.
If we slide that table back, we're going to lose the cords, the speakers, the wiring, everything.
We slid it back a couple of feet at parties and I'm not altogether back, not back-back, just back a couple of feet.
It's already falling apart, it fell down once and took a bunch of architects to butt back together, okay?
So.
And you see the air gap right there.
Okay, they've just set the tables.
Before we, before we reach decisions on how we're going to handle any other commissioner comment, Commissioner.
I suggest that it's fine if they sit here so they can see expressions, that they ask their questions at the end. They've probably done our questioning, that they each get an opportunity for a question. I, I don't think it would be appropriate for them to be in rotation.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Until the very end, and I think that would be a compromise.
I, I got, I have nineteen days left, they have a vested interest.
Yeah, but we are the present commissioners.
We are the present board of commissioners, and this is the board.
You've got nineteen days.
Commissioner Rexro?
And we have nineteen days.
It's not an ideal setup, but this isn't for me a sword to die on, so I, let's get it done, I, whatever I want to do, make it clear that they are here as guests at this table, so if we make that in public comment clear or the opening comments clear, and I guess, I, I can't remember, it seemed like we talked about the, the order of question, I'll get back to that for a little, what did we discuss, I'm trying to remember exactly what we discussed, it seemed like we were going to ask our questions, they would ask their questions, and then or was it they would ask their questions first and give us input before we ask ours, or this is for deliberations, remember?
No, no, they were.
Okay, so our questions first, then their questions, and they would give us input that our deliberation, so that's the order of things, they could sit here until that questioning process was done, then he would leave these, this table for our deliberations. Not ideal, but I don't know exactly, it's just, it's not, I'm not a fan, but I'll accept it.
I know.
And I, I, I'm appreciative of our administrator raving the roads and getting us set up today, and appreciate it. I appreciate the fact that we have the commissioner elects here, and glad they're willing to be a part of the process, and glad that we're all willing to consider their input. I, I, I hope that, my suggestion is hearing everybody, they sit up here during the interview, we ask the questions first. If we've missed some questions, they participate, they ask their own questions, then we will dismiss them to the, to the public, and we will, we will debate and discuss our decision.
That's after the second interview.
After the second interview, if that makes sense, is that, can you live with that, commissioners?
I, I cannot, I think this is a dangerous precedent to set, to bring public up to this board of commissioners table for the very next commission. I think it's a terrible precedent to set to bring public.
Here's where I am.
And at the board of commissioners' special meeting.
Let me make my final decision.
I hear you, I hear you. This is so important, this is such. Okay, I hear you, so let me get on, the chair, the chair has heard you, I, I.
You interrupted me, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lautner.
I was going to give a comment, and I'm trying to be very respectful.
Oh, the hell with it. Commissioner Lautner, the hell with it, we'll set it up, let's get it done.
This process is too important for us not to agree, so.
You'll have our letter of resignation within an hour.
Richard, don't look that way.
No, I don't need you.
Melinda, how long do you not need that, Richard?
Mr. Ray, get it done, we got to do it.
Please, that, we said.
No, you're done.
So, okay, thank you, let's just take a second. Sure, chairs.
Just lost us.
I would like to finish the comment I was trying to make.
Go ahead.
This process is so important to this county, I'm willing to give anything to make sure that the six of us do it together in a very positive way. So even though I think.
And we did agree, because we did agree on that very point, it's very important, very important.
Even though I strongly disagree with Commissioner Lautner, I, I, I agree that we ought to comply with her wishes so that we can continue this important process.
I have one more thing, Commissioner Lautner, would you please change places with me, because I won't be able to see over someone's head.
We will take a, a five-minute break.
I was just going to sit there, see if someone could see over my head.
This is, oh, you're the smallest guy.
I'm pretty short. Can you see over my head if I sit here, or do I, I've never been accused of two.
It's a problem. You'll be fine, I'll be just fine.
Can I show this up? I don't have much hair on there, that shouldn't be a problem.
Been here a few minutes.
Might be a glare.
Might be a glare.
We will, after we reconvene, we will.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm missing out on quite a few things today, I may have missed out, so I don't know.
Well, I'm just doing a test. I'm serious, I didn't hope my head would be in the way.
That was Kim.
Oh, absolutely.
She's, she just arrived.
Okay.
I made, I made a note in the minutes for that.
Well, why don't we wait until they, and then we can go up there, that way we're not interfering with the that, that part of the interview process.
We, we do want you to be able to.
You, you, part of it, you want to be able to, so you can see.
Going to reconvene, in a spirit of cooperation and collaboration, we're going to proceed. I would ask the new commissioner elects to join us at the table here, and my understanding of the process is we're going to invite the candidate in. I have a couple of opening comments to, to him, and we'll ask him a, a first question, and then all of the commissioners, in a very conversational way, you don't have to be, if, 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 if nobody's talking, you can ask your question. When we're done with commissioner questions, we will ask the commissioner elects to, to have, have questions, and then we will thank our candidate. Mr. Brown is here, and we will then take a short break and, and wait for the next interview.
Minister, slide Commissioner Ross's presence.
I did.
Okay.
Are we all set on that? Mr. Robbins is on his way, and he will be joining us when he gets here. Thank you for coming, Mr. Brown.
Sure.
Thank you for coming, and you started your morning off with a stat?
I did, I actually spent the share briefly too.
And we, we, the, the current board of commissioners are going to ask some questions up here today, and then we've invited the commissioner elects to come in and also have some questions for you.
Okay.
And then we will ask you to conclude, and, and we will have a second interview with our, our other candidate.
Is that just him up there?
And, and I thank you, thank you a lot for coming.
Okay, sure.
Before we get started, it's been two weeks now since you interviewed, have you had some thoughts? Had some thoughts about the county and thoughts about your interest, and, and what homework have you done, and?
Well, I'm, I'm still here, I, I spent some time looking through the financials anyway, very detailed what's out online anyway. Be pretty granular at that, that level, usually I have to dig down a little bit deeper on much of those, I saw the audit report, which my, my previous exposure to that was in the paper, there was, one of the questions I had was, there was a few action items that were supposed to be taken care of by December thirty-first. I was wondering where we were at in that process, I think it was the segregation of duties, and there was another item that, that I think the board was acting on from the audit.
One, one of the, one of the, the audit findings was about our grants policy, Jen, you want to speak to that? The, from the audit, there were a couple of suggestions for us to do before year-end, one was audit our grants, and so we did, did out a new grants policy that was consistent with the auditor's suggestions, what was the other one?
The, the duties.
Segregation of duties was one.
Segregation of duties, the board has hired a assistant finance director as well as a second town clerk, and so then there is more than just two staff members, as there was last year, so that has, that should be taken care of.
All right, well, that was obvious, I guess, and it's been taken care of since it was a two thousand twenty-three audit, now we have four person staff, or whatever, so.
Well, then we're going to, we're going to, this is very informal, and we don't want a conversational dialogue.
Sure.
Mr. Janik is in Marquette, but he's online, if you have any questions.
I was wondering where he was today, okay.
And we will start, let's start with our most senior commissioner, Commissioner Lautner, you have a first question?
Yeah, so, so you spoke a little bit about studying our financials, but have you looked into our, our board policies and procedures? Have you had an opportunity to study them at all?
I did not look at the, the policies and procedures of the board, no, I did not.
Okay. Okay, so county government runs quite a bit different than like township government, different, different rules, different authorities, et cetera, so just wondering if, if, you know.
The, one of the, one of the things I noticed, that was one of my questions, and Ty, you alluded to this when I was here before, and I just met the sheriff down there. The dynamic between this office and the elected departments, the sheriff department being, being one of them, which you typically don't encounter somewhere else, one of my questions was going to be, you know, the interaction that I would have with these folks, are there, are there regularly scheduled meetings? Do I get invited to them meetings, do I go there, or do we just sit here and just talk about money as it, as it relates to them? How, how does that work?
Everything boils down to being money, almost, almost everything, every, every decision made almost always has a financial implication. But I'm not going to answer that question as far as how an administrator, I've worked with several, and they've all done it a little bit different, they all seem to have their own style. But as we said during the first interviews, you know, communication is the absolute biggest issue, and, but I mean, let others answer that.
Well, that's why I was asking if there's regularly scheduled contact, or is it just on an as-needed basis with, with those folks, I mean, everywhere else here I'm working with, those people don't report, you know, to, to me, so.
They, they, they don't not report, but they're invited to the department head meetings, and I think most, most of them do attend that. Mr. Janik is on the phone, we could ask him how he handles that, if, if you want to speak to that, Chad.
Yeah, sure, we had a monthly meetings, all the elected officials and department heads.
Hold on, we can't hear you, Chad.
Okay.
Looks on his end, all right.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Can you hear me now?
No, it's good.
Okay, good, well, when, when I was a county administrator, what we did is we had monthly meetings, all the elected officials and all the department heads were invited. We reviewed the board meetings, and then went around the table, and each one gave an update, and really did not make a distinction between your elected or department, we're all working for the same people, and people expect us to work together, and I think over all the years I was there, department heads, elected officials worked together very well, but we did meet as a group on a regular basis.
Okay, oh, one thing to clarify, when you said, when, when you meet, was it one-on-one, or were they all there together at the same time?
No, it was a group meeting.
Okay, that, that's, that's what I thought you did, okay.
And I thought it was important that everyone knew what every other department was doing and what the elected officials were doing, and it was very beneficial dialogue, sit in the same room, drink coffee, and talk about what events happened the last month, and what events are coming up in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, and then as it relates to, you know, they're held accountable to a budget, but obviously they're a standard-alone entity, so what do we, you know, we slide it across the table and show it, you know, how, this is how you're doing, or how much input do we have beyond that?
It's, it's about team and communications and, and collaboration.
Okay.
Another question from Commissioner, Mr. Rexro?
So, you know, we have a couple contrasting options here, I mean, one from outside and one from inside, so I'd like you to spend a little time contrasting what you think to be the benefit of outsider, or actually less involved government person coming in than one that has a deep government experience, and that's really our two choices, so if you can explain to us what you think your advantage is in that situation, what your disadvantages are in that situation.
Okay. Uh, when I went through the job description, because obviously I have no experience, but that was one of the requirements, but I went through the job description, and it seemed to me like everything that was towards the top is me and I could do, it didn't seem, you know, a, a lot of it has to do budgetary, but beyond that, it's management, you have eight or nine departments here. To me, it seems like a lot of this is people skills, and not so much that maybe the tiki-tackness of, of government rules or whatever. This job, you know, you invested, I'm supposed to be the guy to make sure the trains are running on time, that seems what to be a lot of the, a lot of the responsibility is. From a budgetary standpoint, I, we don't have to talk a lot about that, I don't think, you looked at my resume, I mean, we've kind of beaten that to death. I've done it, and I've done it for organizations larger, there's some nuances with the revenue and such, I, I'm not dismissing that, but the whole budgetary process, I've, I've done that for years. And that was what was at the top of, top of the list, so I, it gets back more to people skills, managing these departments, having people put faith in me, trust in me, use me as a sounding board so their departments can run better, you know, our, our goal here is to, you know, provide services for the taxpayers as efficiently as possible, so I want everybody to come to work, be efficient, enjoy their job, I want them to like coming to work, I don't want to have an environment where people say, I really don't want to go to work today because the environment's not well. Create a, a culture and environment where people want to come to work, and they'll do their best work anyway. So I, back to your point, you know, beyond the numbers part, I thought it was a lot of people skills, managerial skills, which I have, because I've led large organizations, and that's why I thought I could do this, the first time, when this, Melinda had mentioned in the paper, you know, where was this guy when it was the CFO in the administrator position, because I did not apply for that, and, yeah, that was, that was in the paper. I didn't apply for it at the time, because I thought, wow, maybe there's, you know, there's just a, 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 a lot of people out here with a lot of government experience, right? And then when I, I saw the resumes of the people that applied, it's like, well, hell, these people don't have any more than I do, I actually thought I could do the job as well as these people can, that I saw the first time. So when this came up again, very fortuitous, you know, okay, it came up again, it's like, okay, I'm going to give it a shot, because I think I can do the job. I wouldn't be here, you know, going through this process, having read the job description and met you guys, if I didn't think I could do it. I'm not here because I need the money, I have a job now where I work from home, and I don't even have to put shoes on, right? I'm, I'm looking for a challenge, and I'm not going to give that up, to come here and do this if I, if I don't think I can do it. I'm sixty-five years old, I'm like, I want to do something I can really sink my teeth into here at the end of my career, instead of keeping on blowing on the embers of the newspaper business. And when this came up, I'm not actively looking for another job, I planned on just retiring from where I'm at, I got two or three years left there. And it's like, no, I see, this seems really cool, I love this community, and there's something about public service, I think, that would, that appeals to me. If I didn't do this, the other thing I was looking for doing was becoming a teacher at the college, I want to get out more and do more people, anyway, so I don't, my biggest concern, circling back, I don't have any government experience, I sit there, and it's like, you know, God, the worst thing to me would be, am I leaving revenue on the table somewhere? I don't have any government experiences, or some grant or endowment or something that I would miss because I've never done this before. But I imagine a lot of it's repetitive, and I imagine some of it, if the money's coming from the state, you know, there's, there's places I can look, if this is out there, apply for it, you know, that's, that, that would be my biggest concern, but I think there's probably safeguards to that along the way, that I wouldn't be missing any money somewhere from a grant or whatever. The rest of it, I'm not worried about, but that was the one thing, it's like, that would be a cardinal sin to leave revenue on the table because I didn't understand the procedures, so, thank you. Yeah, Kim.
Yeah, kind of following up on your people skills, thinking about the importance of your role in bringing all the different groups together, well, I was rereading your resume last night, and something stuck out to me.
Oh.
Um, yeah, I've never heard anyone describe themselves as having impeccable integrity, thought that was a pretty strong statement.
It is.
And I just wondered if you could relate that strong feeling you have about your integrity, and how, how that might be evident when you start working with all the different groups that you need to be the leader to bring it out to you.
I, I put that in there because it's, it's kind of my guiding principle. That's the one thing we can control the most, you know, some people are smarter than others, more educated, whatever, different, different skills. But integrity is something we, we control a hundred percent, a hundred percent. One of the first things I would do when I come in here, and it's nothing I would have to work at, I wouldn't sit in my office, I was never that kind of guy, when I worked downtown, I'd rather go walk and visit somebody than call them on the phone or send them an email, the people, some of them probably watching out there now, they have to learn about what I, what I'm about, so they could let their guard down, it's like, Mark's a fair guy, he's going to treat us right, so I, I, I would like to maximize touch points, it was nice meeting some of the people down there today, with the employees, so they get to know me and say, okay, this guy's a straight shooter, you know, he's, he's going to do right, he's going to listen first, and he's going to do the right thing by us. If I can establish that among the staff, then if there's any, you know, necessary conflict resolution or whatever, they'll at least have faith in me to resolve, resolve it properly, if I'm sitting in my office and not, you know, seeing anybody or coming into contact, they're not getting to know me. Once people get to know me, I've learned to shut my, then it's like, okay, we can work with Mark, Mark's a fair guy, if I have a conflict with another employee, he learns the story, he'll do the right thing, so.
We do have an unusual setup here, because you'll be working with, is it five or six elected officials who don't work for you, work for the people, there are people report to them, but the people who report to them are in the same boat as every other employee in the building, so it's a really unusual structure. In that case, very, very different than a corporation or a company, so your job is to get along with the elected officials and create a team. There are also elected department heads that do work for you, so it's a challenging job, so how have you brought disparate groups together in past managed organizations or people?
Okay, what I reflect upon then, we might have spoken to this before, but.
And, and I'm sorry, this is kind of repetitive, but it's.
Oh, oh, no, I, I, I wasn't, no, I, I didn't mean it that way. I just don't want to bore you by repeating something, but it's, but maybe I did before. My, I, I referenced this in, in the letter that I had written, there was a lot of a numbery things in there about cost-cutting and that, and that's a turn-off to people, but the reason I put it in the letter, and it was in my resume, in order to do what, what I did, or lead the process, I didn't do it by myself, I didn't apply that, but to lead the process of that, when you're cutting millions of dollars a year out of an organization, I'd have to get the executive team together, all right? They all have their different departments, advertising, circulation, production, HR, find it, all right? Guys, we got to take ten million dollars out of here in the next six months, all right? Now, there's a lot of oxes that have to get gored when you have to do something like that, so again, this gets back to, do they trust me that I'm going to do this properly, all right? Well, why should I have to give up this mu, this many million, and this guy only have to give up this many million? You get people together, you lay down a plan, and it's like, this is for the, the betterment of the organization, the way I used to do it was, I would, I would ask people, I want you to come back with a list of cuts with dollar amounts, least onerous to most onerous. We're going to have to do stuff here that people don't like, and this is getting to your point of getting people to work as a team. They would come back with it, some of it was easy, but now we have more money to find, all right, and nobody wants to give it up, I mean, that's just the nature of it. So then we would get down to the difficult part, I would have them in the room, and we would look at it and say, well, we can cut a hundred thousand dollars over here, but that's going to harm the organization more than if I cut a hundred thousand dollars over here, and when you lay it all out and you get people together, and it's like, look, guys, we, we all got to row the boat here in the same direction. We managed to do it where people understood, we hit our number, and we did it as, we did it as a team, and it was open, and it was transparent, and people could live with it, and part of it was, they trusted me with the process, so, again, that was bringing people together where it's like, they had their turf, and they don't want to give any of it up. But we, we have to here, all right, there's, there's, there's no going halfway, so we get everybody together. Yes, it makes more sense to take money out of this department as opposed to this one for the better of the organization, so we leave the room as an executive team, and we understand what the plan is, and then we go and we execute the plan. I, that's the best example I could come up with for that, so.
And you, you mentioned when you were here before about working with, with the board. Most of the time, our board agrees on issues, sometimes we strongly disagree, sometimes what one commissioner would want you to do is not the same as what another commissioner would do. You've worked with lots of boards of directors, I know you have, how would you, how would you manage working with, with the board of, of, not, you're supervising elected officials, and you're working on a, with a board of commissioners, that all of them ran on a campaign promise to do something, but it may be at odds with what another commissioner had ran on, how do, how do you, how do you work with the board and, and, and try to build a, a strong, strong, effective board?
Right, so you guys are my customer, you, you, you guys are my bosses, I, I, one of the things, look me up, get to later, it's like, what, what do you need most from me? So if any one of you guys come to me and say, well, I need this information, I mean, that's just a given, that it, that I supply that to you, all right? There, there's no favoritism here, you're all equal in my eyes, there's going to be seven of you, and nobody's above anybody else, if somebody wants something, I'm going, I'm going to give it to you to the best of my ability, now in terms of what action comes out of that, this, this. Now, in terms of what action comes out of that, this, this is a little bit of a curve ball that you just threw me here. If my, my job is to support you guys and give you the data. I would love to have the ability to decide how the money, I'm as opinionated as anybody else. I'd love to decide how the money is going to be spent, but that's not my job. That's your job. So if I'm, I, maybe you're you're nuancing it in that I wouldn't supply somebody with as much information. So someone has. A leg up over somebody else. I wouldn't do that. If if that's where you're coming from. My job's not to decide how the money's spent. But to educate you guys, if you will, almost, here's all the data. And and treat you all equally so you can all make the best decision. I don't know if I'm answering that properly, but I would never. I would, I would never withhold information from some, this gets back to the integrity. I'm not going to, I'm not going to do that. That's BS. I mean, I wouldn't do that if that's.
You answered exactly what I was asking.
Okay, right. Yes, right now, I I learn more by listening, okay?
How about some specific three month, six month and twelve month goals? Have you thought about?
Sure.
How you might be approaching this new position?
Yeah, so so the first, the first thing when I come in, I alluded to this earlier. It it it's not a task. It's just something I have to do. I don't sit, I I gotta have the trust of the staff. They have to learn about who I am so they can do through their jobs best and not have barriers. Develop a relationship with them. So they say, Mark's a straight shooter. He's got integrity. He's a good and decent guy. That's the first thing because we count on all these people out there, like I said before, to get the trains running on time. Develop that with the staff. The other thing would be that can happen simultaneously with everything else. What is it my bosses need? First and foremost, one, two, three months down the road. Have a, I don't want to miss any deadlines. I don't want to drop the ball. I don't want anybody who works for me dropping the ball. Where's the calendar of what you folks need? Next would be, I'd like to take a deeper dive into the numbers. I think that's a big, a big part of this. Position. There's a lot of detail out there. Numbers tell a story. But you can misinterpret it and have the wrong story, you know, things aren't always as they seem. I'm very inquisitive, so I'd like to start looking at things. Thirdly, I got to meet with the people that report to me and I need to learn their business. One, just so I can know how how well they're doing. Plus, they need a sounding board, whatever their department is, you know, the person who's head of that department. Needs to be able to reach out to somebody, you know, hey, I just, I have this problem. I have this just. I have to know beyond common sense. I have to know rudimentary amount of what. That department does so I can help the manager do their job. I think that would be the. The first few things that I would do anyway. And I need to learn my people about, you know. You know, what are the strengths and weaknesses of the team? So when someone's telling me something, it's like, okay. You know, who's who's telling me what, what's one of their strengths and the weaknesses of the team? So.
Commissioners, any other questions?
So, well, I'll just touch on a couple of things that you, you did touch on and I I think that you have certainly the right idea. So. You have a, you would have a lot of of seasoned. People within this courthouse who have those answers and and that's where that's where they are. So. Yes, the board commissioners. One may come to you on their own and say, hey, I've got this great idea for something we might do with this building per se. And that's okay to explore. But obviously, anything would have to come back to the full board commissioners to to make that decision. But as a lot of our seasoned staff does. And I see with a lot, I see it with our clerk for sure, because a clerk is to the clerk to the board commissioners. They are our clerk. She will always share it with all of the commissioners. And we've had, so we've worked with administrators, some who don't share everything. And some who do share everything. And I just think that it's super important that all seven get all of the same information. As soon as possible. And it sounds like you understand that.
Well, that's where I went with Ty's question. I wasn't quite sure if that's where he was going with it, but. Right, I mean, if everybody has all the information, then the best decision's made. I'll look at it from an altruistic standpoint.
Again, so in the way that our budget rules and and they obviously set. Set the course for, as you mentioned, talking with an elected official who maybe has a staff but wants to do something with their budget, they have to follow the budget rules. One of the first things that a person would have to get. Really familiar with.
Okay. I guess that circles back to maybe to your first question. Again.
Yes.
Okay.
Those procedures and board rules. Listen.
Yeah, so circling kind of back around to my original question and you asked it very well because, yeah, there's. I do see advantages from outside people looking at the organization that involves also a lot. Harry baggage with them and stuff, but in either case, as you proceeded through this, you would have to learn. The process as Commissioner Lautner, it's like we have deeply talented staff and. And processes are placed. It's been hard to do. So we, you have a team here, and we're effectively managed. You have to understand what it is you're managing. And so what would be your, how would you see yourself coming up to speed with the intricacies and policies of actual government? Where people should stay in their lane, what actually things responsibility do they have and don't have? And so there's a learning curve for you. So how would you accomplish that?
Right, so so I kind of alluded this with with Thomas's question of a few moments ago. One of the first thing. Is to learn what it is that my my department, this is where you're going with that, right? To learn what it is the departments do.
To a certain extent, yeah, but there's a breadth of knowledge, I mean, of all of that, okay, there's. State law dictates a whole lot of what happens here. It's very specific what people do or do what our responsibilities can, what we can and can't do. Where where alleys end and that's the same with departments, the same with electors. I mean, they have carved out spots that they, you know, that they, that state law gives them. It's important, it would be really important for you to know that in order to effectively run the organization. So how would you, what would you be planning to come up to speed? How would you see yourself doing that?
All right, so this is different. This gets more into the the government aspect of it as opposed to departments. And this is, this is my weakness, right? All right, so whatever I, whatever is out there, I'm a voracious learner. If someone could point me to the right thing, like, you know, a website or whatever. State, there was, I was out poking around the state of Michigan as a website for. County administrators, you know, so it's, but you got to have a login ID or whatever it was was to get into it. There's got to be something out there where I can get up to speed by. As quickly as possible, learning whatever the rules, the bylaws and, you know. The drain commission has to follow one thing and the sheriff's department or the other or whatever, that there's there's swimmin's. I don't have that knowledge. I I don't. But there's, there's something out there where I I can learn it. I'll try to learn as fast as I can. I I get their stuff. Let me phrase it another way. There's stuff here that I know. There's stuff I can learn fast. I don't have that, but it's something I'm not gonna. Sometimes people shy away from the stuff they don't know and they'll go do what it is they know best. That would be foolish of me to do that in this instance because I'm setting myself up for failure. So the stuff that I don't know that I need to know, which is what you're, which is what you're asking me. I would have to, I would have to learn that as quickly as possible and I understand that or else I'm shooting myself in the foot.
We were given a text at Young Commissioners School. I don't know if you guys went to that, to how county government works. It's like a, it's a pretty interesting read if you like fall asleep really quickly at night. But it does contain a lot of good information and that's a great blueprint for how how things work, where where the lines are. Because the the thing is, we have great people, but everyone who has a silo wants their silo to be just a little bit bigger than what it is. And that's just a natural tennis. That's to make them a bad person. So. Your job overall has to be able to know those things well enough to to say this is when. You're outlined, so.
Yeah, well, I I didn't want to try to oversimplify it either and say, well, I'm sure there's, you know. County administrator for dummies book or something like that. But it's it's got to be out there. I understand that's my weakness. I'm not going to. Spend my time over here more on this. If I understand that's my weakness, I need to shore it up. I I get that.
You're committed to do it then. You're committed to do it.
Yes, that's that. That's what I'm trying to press upon you. I I know that's, like I say, sometimes people. Well, I'll spend my time doing what it is I know best because that's what I'm comfortable with, but. I would, I would have to go there. And maybe I should have tied back into one of your questions earlier.
Commissioner Russ and then Commissioner Olgar, then I think it's probably time to see if our. New commissioners have some questions.
I do. So you've been in the community for how long?
Two, two years. I moved here the day after Thanksgiving, two years ago.
Okay.
U-Haul truck.
Okay, and in your getting. You know, a part of the community with your circle of friends, your neighbors, reading the enterprise, rigorately goal and. Community organizations. So coming as administrator, what do you think biggest issue? That the county commission is dealing with right now? Or maybe several, but what's your take on kind of what's this big, what's a big issue that you feel like you might be delving into if you take this position?
Okay, the the biggest issue, I don't know if it's something, it it's the one that. I don't know how we're going to slay it. It's the housing cost here. Okay. So I'm, I I hear that all the time. I hear that all the time. But I'm I'm here now. It's like, okay, but I don't own a business, but people do and it's tough. All right. But here, okay, you're running the county, so. I'm assuming some of our, we we have employees here, maybe they've been here a while and they're ready to retire. I met Jerry, the out here watering the Christmas tree today. He's done January third, right? So as we start to lose employees that have been here a while, how the heck do we backfill and get candidates? The EMS gentleman, I met him downstairs too about, yes, it's it's hard to get employees. So one of the biggest things that this county's facing is. How do we feel, how do we fill positions when they come open? If people have to. Commute forty miles to get here. I guess that's something in this, you know, that that's the, that's the, the. We live in paradise. That's the unfortunate downside of it. Anyway, there's always a flip side to everything. So I started, you know, compensation, just do we have, what does that mean for the compensation that we have here in order to keep the staff up? In terms of other than housing, I'm trying to think of. Of what else you would do, a problem. I mean, fortunately, this county is not destined to. You know, there's, there's a lot of resources here, but we have to be mindful of how we spend those resources. And prove to the community that we're being as efficient as possible. I can't be beyond the housing. I'm trying to think what else would be. Huge in this, in this area. I'm sorry, maybe I'm missing the obvious. You guys are all thinking I'm nuts, but maybe there's something else. If I, getting, getting everybody to work together as a team, I think would be. There, there seems to be, have been some. Dysfunction a little bit around here. So it's like, I don't know. Maybe, maybe everybody starts pulling together. Maybe that's one of the problems of the county. Sorry.
So. One issue is that government is very different than than business. So how familiar are you force with state accounting standards for county governments? Things like merge retirement, people meetings that you probably know a lot about FOIA. But how, how much?
I come from the gap world, which is not the government. I mean, I passed the CPA exam on the government accounting stuff, but that was years ago. I can't hang my hat on that anymore. That is something, talk about getting up to speed quick on something. That is something that doesn't. Bother me in the least. I can get up to speed on that. I, AICPA, I can, I can get up, download a program and. Take that myself in the quiet of my study and get up to speed on that. The the government accounting part. That that does, that doesn't faze me. I can learn that very quickly.
Yeah, we don't make a profit rich.
No.
But I understand.
But but it's, it's, it's fund accounting. It's, it's different. I mean, I understand, but I have a strong accounting background. And that's, that I know there are, because I've already checked with the AICPA. I can, I can. Take a course sitting at home and get up to speed on government accounting.
So we're also talking about. Transitioning in our finance department. Everything on paper. Software update, right? Thank you very much. A software update in our finance department. So that will be a couple of years and a lot of work.
I've, I've done that before, unfortunately. Yeah, it is a lot of work. Yes, I I know, I I came to the meet after I interviewed you for the first time. Somebody might have recognized I sat over here. I came to the next board meeting and I heard Kathy sit up there and she, I did not see her today, but she mentioned to it. She said it was a chart of accounts conversion, but I assume it's much, it's got to be something. Beyond that, it's got to, it is software related.
So that's, that's a step one. They're two different things. The charter of commerce mandated by the state of Michigan, so it's just can bring in numbers, but that.
Okay.
That's, that's a very small step. That's not the bigger picture.
Right, well, that's when she said chart of, then I was going to ask, well, who decided to do that when the staff was new, but it sounded like it had, it had to be done. But beyond that, I've. I've done, been involved with two software conversions. Last one was to Oracle. Four years ago and I had a. New reporting and that sort of thing. And and she was saying, it is a lot of work. I will stand behind her. I heard her sit here and say, it is, it is a lot of work to do that. Yeah. So there's, there's, there's a right and a wrong to it. You know, if you don't do it right and it doesn't, there's. Some, sometimes you can, you know, you can get a C plus on something and it's still past that. You can't. It has to be right. So.
Commissioner Lautner, you have another question?
Kind of a, kind, well, sort of a statement more than, because you touched on the the conundrum. So, so. We have mandated and non-mandated services, right? So we have to, when it gets down to, as you say, your, as we have, I'm having to kind of hundred thousand dollars since relatively the county government, we've got some things we absolutely must fund.
Sure.
And then others, obviously, we, we don't have to. Now, when you look at Leland County as a whole. Its issues are a little bit different than Leland County government as a whole. And so Leland County government funded by mostly taxes. So we can have a little miller grade up here, but it brings in a lot of taxes because we're obviously a retirement community. That's who's moving in. And and it's a lot of big money. So median home, I think I heard is seven hundred and some thousand.
It's ridiculous.
For Leland County. So, so. The tax base is good. It brings money. We've generally been increasing every year without having to raise our base. So fortunately for us, there, there's, there giving a. There's a lot of housing being built just down into Grand Travers and county. And I think there's something built into Benzema. I'm not sure about that. So there's a lot of housing going in down there, mostly in the form of apartments, but it's alleviating some of the situation. So we talk about commutes. But we have a lot of people who commute from Leland down into Grand Travers and even over to Antrim.
Yeah.
And then we have people that live outside the county and. It's a beautiful commute. So therein lies a problem because as far as, you know, housing is something that we're ever going to combat. Here, unfortunately. As as somebody comes in, buys a seven hundred thousand dollar home, it just raises the values of the property next to it. So. And and that creates then. A big issue with anybody who wants to stay in large agriculture because. Putting tax on its heights and best use of our land to be in tax against housing. So when it sells, it's rarely sold as land because that's where that is. And that's how they're going to be taxed. So. It's a, it's a good housing, right? It's money for the government, but it doesn't really help with that issue.
I know, and we all move here because we like it the way it is. I know, and we all move here because we like it the way it is. And I moved in here two years ago and I said, that's it. I don't want anybody else to come, but it doesn't, it doesn't work that way. We want to ma- we want to maintain the beauty that that's here, but somehow I I I totally get it. Like, yeah, it did. We we move here because we like it the way it is. But then we know maybe it has to, you gotta turn the dial a little bit, or we don't, we aren't able to get police officers or 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 medics or whatever, because they can't afford to live here. So it's, there's there's, it's the dark side of the paradise. Yeah, I understand that. Yeah.
Mark, we uh, we wanted to make sure that you got a chance to meet the new commissioners and uh, give them an opportunity as well to ask you something that we might have missed. And so uh, we uh, all agreed we wanted them here. And uh, I think you've met them, but they'll, when they ask a question, they can uh, introduce themselves. Let's start now with Mr. Campbell. You had a question for him?
Yeah, Alan Campbell. Um, I won't call you a dinosaur if you don't call me a dinosaur. I was former owner of the Leno Enterprise and we kind of chase that newspaper business.
What have you said articles in your last week?
Yeah, I still, I still do like to write. Um, anyways, I I obviously appreciate the opportunity uh, from current commissioners and uh, as I had written, you know, really, we're the ones we're gonna be sitting up there, or at least five of, five new ones.
True.
Uh, uh, I I I had a general question for for you and our next candidate is now presently during the uh, during the preparation of agendas and agenda items, uh, it it's very well done. And uh, there is a sheet where the, with an executive report. And this is, this is my thoughts. I I would like to see more thoughts from uh, the administrator as far as what the outcomes of these decisions might be. And I'd like to hear uh, I'd like to hear what the administrator thinks of some of these. And and so I don't, I I'm not someone who says while we do have the final decision, I'm not someone who says, I think the administrator steps out of line when he provides he or she, but him in this case, would provide his opinion. How how comfortable would you be in that role?
I'm very comfortable.
I thought.
I I I can, I'm not a shoot from, shoot from the hip kind of guy.
Yeah.
But if I'm sitting here, I'm crunching all the numbers and I'm doing all this. It's like, well, then I'm feeding it to you. It's like sure, I I I have all the, I have all the same that you do, maybe even a little bit more, because I couldn't fit it all into the 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 piece of paper and and it's, I I would not.
That's not a problem.
That, no, I mean, that's, that's, that's what I do now. I mean, that's, you know, so no, that's, that's not a, I, no. I I my my concern would be coming in that it's like, not, no, I've observed one meeting, I saw Richard sitting over here that's, I don't want to overstep my bounds. I would be more apt to to do that than to be a wallflower. So.
Understood. Good. I don't, I I I certainly want participation on the, on the part of the administrator and and it's been recognized uh, that uh, you're uh, you know, the whole of your resume obviously has to do with government work. Um, there's advantages and disadvantages. I'm wondering directly over you, you sent in your resume. Uh, I think November ninth and it here's five weeks later. Um, what have you done in that amount of time to familiarize yourself with county government? And if you were selected, what plans have you, have you prepared for to put yourself in a position to, when you would start, to be in that much of a, of a, of a, of a better seat to to run this?
Okay, so this kind of ties back into it.
A little bit.
What would, to, to, all right, that's my weakness. It's, 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 it's out there. Uh, I have poked around the, like, I mentioned, as I've stated, Michigan, there's a site out there for county administrators where, but I can't drill down. So I would, I would go a hundred percent towards what is it that I don't know? So somebody could point me in the right direction or, hey, this guy's gonna be the county administrator, so I get access to what's on that website to. I'm a very inquisitive person by nature and I like to learn. I'm 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 seeking this job because I want to do something different. I I'm not coming here to like coast, all right? I know my present job. I want to learn something different. I want to, I want to challenge. That's the part I don't know. That's what I would go after first. There's gotta be some material. I I mentioned to to Gwen's question. I already know as it relates to government accounting, the AICPA will send me a course. I can get that. That's, that's nothing.
And I didn't mean for you to be repetitive on that. That's why I
No, but but to your point, and it's, it's, it's the elephant in the room.
Okay.
Uh, I will go after that as fast and hard as I can.
One, one last question. What do you do for fun?
Time for someone else to have a chance.
What I
What do I do for fun?
What do you do?
I kayak and I, I'm a terrible fisherman. So I, that's, I I and I hike. I like to hike. I guess I sit behind a computer all day. So I I go, I go over to Clay Cliffs or uh, Wheelback or whatever, and uh, I have a couple kayaks and my sons come up. We try and catch fish.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Robbins, do you have a question?
Um, thank you. Sorry I was late. Uh, I had to plow someone else so they could be here today. Um, Rick Robbins, I'm the District One.
Yeah.
Commissioner, I'm uh, follow up on what Alan just asked you. I guess it's safe to say that in your experience and your professional career, if you don't know the answer, you know where to find it.
Yes.
Okay, that's what, I mean, I don't like you when you say, you know, your weaknesses, because I don't think you have weaknesses. You're just, you know, you're just not familiar with that area.
Sure.
Um, next, my question is for you is, you know, as a board, uh, we always uh, are looking to see what you're gonna do. My question is, what do you need from us as a board to be successful, to be our administrator and take us to the next level?
Well, actually, when it came time for a question, I haven't asked this yet. Because we've had a nice flow going, I guess. There hasn't been a lull. I'll put this out there for a couple of you. Uh, I I have a hard, I have a hard stop, just so everybody knows, like eleven oh five, because I still have another job and I have a Zoom call that I have to leave.
And we have, we have
Okay, okay. Uh, and they're, they're paying me. So I have to be there, but uh, what, what, you know, there was an administrator here before me that wasn't here very long. And we don't, we don't need to get into that. Uh, but what, and I'll put this out there for two of you. What, what do you see that I need to do first and foremost for you, my bosses, to consider me to be successful?
I I I will take a stab at answering that, you, before you try to change too much, you need to learn about where we've been and why we're doing things that, where we're doing them. And and uh, I I think uh, I I heard you speak to one of the questions about if you wanna spend a lot of time listening
Yes.
and learning. And and I think sometimes new administrators fail to do that before they uh, try to change too much. That's just my opinion. Mr. Yoder, do you have a question?
Yep, Steve Yoder here, um, Commissioner Elect from District Seven, Cedar Maple City area. Um, you touched on this earlier, um, a little bit with regard to where you feel like the most important thing as administrators to deal with some of the housing and stuff, but you go deeper into that. What would you feel, you know, once a contract is signed, once you're in the seat, what do you feel like is the most important job that your job would be once you're in there? What's the, you know, you've obviously looked at, you know, the county, you you went through the finances, you've, you know, you've met a lot of the employees, the different departments and stuff like that. Once you take that role on, what would you feel like just from what you've researched and seen that you would see from day one that your goal is, that you feel like has to be addressed? Um, and either has to be changed or in that sense, whatever.
I I think the, again, the, I, the staff has to learn of who I am. Uh, whatever touch points I can create with the staff, they need to know that I'm a straight shooter. I have integrity, impeccable. Or and and I I will be fair to them. Uh, as a manager, I I I can attest it probably, if you went back and in in spoke with people who have ever worked with me, Chad probably spoke with a couple of them. They would say, he's a great guy to work for, you know, he's very understanding or whatever. I have to get everybody pulling in the same direction of the the eight or nine departments. Pulling in the same, pull, pull in the same direction. Uh, keep the trains running on time as efficiently as possible, but the morale that would be important to me. It's, there seems to be a little bit of a, there was an employee survey that somebody brought up to me downstairs and so on and so forth. Come in here as a full-time administrator now. The last one wasn't here very long. Richard hasn't been here very long. There's gotta be some stability here. Uh, and and that would be up to me. It's like, okay, we we have, we have somebody here. We have somebody here we can put our faith and trust and and we can, we can, we can work around. That's what with those people. With with you guys, then it's learning. So so that that, those are the the people that report to me. I report to you folks. Uh, again, I mentioned like, what's, what's coming up, what's on the calendar, what what do you need from me? And I asked the question of you, what, what is it that I need to do to be considered to be successful? Getting you all, all what you, what you need anyway. Okay, that's good.
That's good. Um, now I'll just follow with my second. That way I'm done. Um, but I know you touched on a little bit as far as um, how do you process, like, if there's disagreements between departments, disagreements between commissioners, how do you foresee handling conflict in that sense, resolving it or approaching it, um, or addressing it, I guess? How, how would you handle that?
It it just kind of goes back to what I said. Listen, first and foremost, I'm not a shoot from the hip guy. I'm not gonna take sides. Get as much information as you can. Hopefully, pretty quickly, people around here in this building and and you people there will realize that I'm a fair guy. I just, I just want to do what the, what, what the right thing is. Get the information and and part of that gets back to, I have to start establishing credibility. If I have credibility, conflict resolution becomes much easier. If I have no credibility, I have no chance, because I'm trying to resolve a conflict with a guy that people don't have, have faith in. Uh, get both sides. There's, there, you know, three sides to every story, the truth, the the lie and something else, you know, I gotta, I gotta get all the information. And if I have the credibility with the staff, do do the right thing. And it should be apparent to people. And a lot of things not always, because the personality is involved, that the right solution will come out of that. So.
Okay, uh, Mark Walter, District Two. Um, so you're a coach. You're a team builder. That's what you're telling me.
Yep.
And build a team. Um, and you know what you don't know, and that's very important, to know what you don't know, because you can't ever achieve anything if you don't enhance your knowledge and and pick up where you need to pick up. So that's what you're telling me. Um, I will tell you that you know, the last administrator, the short-term administrator, you know, they changed the way, you know, my impression is the board changed the direction they were going with the position. And they weren't willing to to make that change, and that's fine. So they chose to walk away. Um, in the past as a commissioner, we had um, administrators that we fired to come to mind. And both of those, I was a commissioner.
This would have been a longer time.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Because I mean, he was here about eleven years.
Yeah, I know, but before him, we had a real short-term one. And his failure was, he failed to recognize the intent of where the board was going. So you have to, you know, have the temperament to ask the questions that you need to know to make the decisions you need. So, you know, the biggest part of any job in this job is communication. So you have to know the board's intent. And the board's not doing you, is doing you disservice if they're not clear. Um, both of those administrators have lost their jobs. It was because they failed to recognize the intent or the 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 goals of the board at that time. So that's the biggest wherewithal is communications. And it's, you know, just to give you that. So you have to be um, open to all the commissioners' communications and make sure you understand where each of our minds are at. They don't all have to be in the same track, but they all have to meet at the same station. So, you know, your ability to coordinate, that's important. Do you feel that you have that ability? You're talking about the trains running on time. I'm talking about how the trains get into the station.
I feel, I I I feel I'm a, a very flexible person. Yes, yeah, I'm I'm very opinionated and I won't shy from giving my opinion, but I, again, this is about consensus building. There's seven of you out there, right? And you're trying and you run on different platforms or promises. Uh, there's gotta be a a happy medium in there, in there, in there somewhere. One of the questions, one of the questions that I had was, uh, well, so the, someone mentioned first thirty days, sixty days, whatever. What, how do I get my feedback? Is it, is it, is it formal? Is it more? Hey, Mark, you, you blew that one or whatever. How, how do I get the feedback? Is it, is it formalized? Uh, who gives it? Is it all of you or?
Well, if you were here earlier today, you'd uh, you'd, you'd find it is pretty easy to get feedback from this group. Whether you want it or not. But formal feedback, I I think the Board of Commissioners collectively and individually uh, has has been very eager and willing to uh, communicate with the administrator. And we've talked about goals and we've talked about performance and and I think that would continue. Uh, Melinda, you've been here the longest. Uh, you wanna speak to that?
Um, well, we don't have time, probably. There's just a whole lot behind it. I think it's, it's one word, is communication.
Yeah, communication. Hannah?
I would like to say, um, maybe one of the reasons why one of our past administrators did leave is that she was interested in that dialogue and this board wasn't um, on board to to follow along with it. So if you have the interest to get the feedback, um, we need to make it happen. And and I think it's really important, and I think it's something that we've lacked in the past. So I like to hear that. I'm liking that I'm hearing that from you, um, some formal way of figuring out, is this going the way everybody is happy with? And and get it in the blood, you know, address it right away, not just let it go down, you know, six months, nine months down. So, yeah, thank you for bringing me.
Again, I just, I'll, I'll tie a ribbon around this from my standpoint that you can close it if you want. I have a very good job right now that I I I work from home. And I raised my hand to do this job because it interests me. I want to be part of the community. I mean, it's kind of interesting seeing how the sausage is made here, but you know, it it I I wanted, I want to do something that's more altruistic and feel like I'm making a difference. You know, I I have, I have a deficiency that everybody knows, but I think I can over, more than compensate for that in other areas. And I think I can get up to speed on that. Well, I'm I'm smarter than your average bear. I don't think I'm being brash in saying that. I think I can get up to to speed on that stuff very quick. I wouldn't be raising my hand, saying, I'm gonna give up that position if I didn't think I could come down here and do a good job. I'm not that stupid. I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't give that up, because there's no going back once I get that up. All right. I wouldn't come down here and say, man, I'm not sure if I can do that or not, and if I'm wrong, I'm out of a job. I think I can do it. That's why I'm here.
Well, the ten of us want to say thank you for coming.
Okay.
And we uh, have another interview right after this, and then we'll be meeting after that, and I'm sure Chuck will be in touch uh, very quickly.
Sounds, sounds good. All right.
Thank you.
This is perfect, perfect time.
Thank you.
Can we take a ten-minute break?
Can we take a 10-minute break? We are back and thank you for returning. Thank you, Mr. Dyer, for being here this morning. And on a busy, a busy day for you, I know, because you've got some stuff going on in Northport as well.
Yes, yes, I, I have a council meeting tonight.
The new commissioners. And this commission, this Board of Commissioners has invited them and wants them to be involved in this process. The commissioners, the current commissioners have some questions for you and they are going to be listening. And then when, when we are done, they have some follow-up questions for you.
Perfect.
And we would like to have plenty of opportunity for you to ask questions as well. But I have one to kick us off with, since two weeks ago when you interviewed. What have you learned about, about Leona County Government? And what have you thought about and what are you worried about?
That's a tough question. I don't know that I've learned a whole lot more. I did learn quite a lot this morning, meeting with employees, the employees that I, that were, that came down to the meet and greet. I certainly learned that you've got some very, very committed employees. And that was good to see. The one thing that I've definitely heard a lot of is the challenges that. That all departments, but most particularly the Sheriff's Department is having to recruit. Entry-level employees and how difficult that is, that. What they're. How the, the wage scale here compares to others downstate and how that's, that's impacting their, not just their ability to recruit, but their ability to, to retain and how difficult that is. So. That might be actually, now that you mention it, my biggest worry as to how to make that. As, as administrator, how to make that, how to make that change.
Well, we're going to start and the last time we started with Commissioner Longner, do you want to start with you again, Commissioner Longner?
My first question would be is, is happy to have an opportunity to look at the county's rules of order and procedure and our budget.
Not specifically, no. I'm certainly familiar with what we did down in Calhoun County and, and in particular, the. The limitation on purchasing and that sort of thing, right? We have similar, similar limitations, administrative limitations in Northport. And whatever they may be here would certainly be something that I would either adhere to or suggest to you alternatives that might be. Provide more flexibility if that's necessary, but I don't, I didn't, I have not reviewed them specifically. Before the interview, no.
And I, I absolutely didn't. I didn't look at them, they're probably very similar, I mean, yours. So I imagine they are very similar, so because you certainly have an understanding of how county government works.
I would say that that would be a, a very fair statement, having spent eight years as a county corporation counsel. That. There is nothing in county government that I was not involved in as corporation counsel is, that's the. And the chief civil lawyer for the county, that was a full-time position. I did it for three and a half years while I was a partner at my law firm, doing essentially two jobs at the same time. I got to be too much and became a county employee for the last four years of, of my, of my tenure there. And enjoyed it very, very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Dyer. Reading through your resume and your, your, you certainly have the technical background, I mean, the knowledge of the, the systems and place and things, and that's impressive. But a big part of this position is, is actually running the places, it's a, it's a. Even our administrator sends out a, relationships are primary, everything else is derivative from that. So can you speak to your interpersonal and coaching skills? I mean, it's kind of hard to win over that out of where I see everything else, I see a lot of technical expertise, but if you're not able to. Gather the team. Be a person making trust and, and all of the technical stuff doesn't do us any good. So I'd like you to spend some time convincing us. Your, your abilities in that area or some stories or some way to.
Sure.
Broaden that out, please.
That's actually a very good question, I, I would say that. Without sounding.
I'm asking you to cheer for yourself, so that's.
And, and that's really hard for me to do, so that's, that's, that's a difficulty I'm having, but I would say that that is probably the chief skill that I had as an attorney. I was recognized by the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority as somebody that could. Could settle just about any case that was, that needed to be settled. That was the, you know, where you have a, a risk that, or a. A, a problem case that has a serious chance of excess liability. That would be where I would be frequently brought in to deal with cases like that. And that ended up being how I was often used by the county administrator to, in Calhoun. To work with elected officials that were having problems dealing, like we, I, I mentioned my earlier part in the earlier interview a couple of weeks ago. Having to deal with a county official that was at odds with the county board. And we would sit down in my office, he and I. And there were times when we ended up screaming at each other, literally. That, and him threatening to sue the county and, and then, but then walking out hand in hand and saying, yeah, that was not a, that was a bad, that was a good resolution of that issue. And he's still a very good friend of mine today. In fact, I saw him at a, at a concert in Battle Creek and we. Hugged each other. So that is, that is how I view. The role of a leader. Whatever position that person holds. Is to bring people together. There's no point in, in having a situation where. People that have to work together are at odds with each other, there's no point in that. And that's the thing that I think I'm, I'm. And that's the thing that I think I'm I'm again, if I have one ability, it's the ability to mediate disputes.
So exponential further on that, how do you go out building the relationships required for that? Because that doesn't happen without a trust relationship, it doesn't happen without.
I think the way I think the way you do that is to be interested in in the person at a personal level. The individual that I'm referring to or screaming at each other in the office, we again, attended social events together. We were both members of different Rotary Clubs. We talked about, he he always asked me about my kids and how they were doing, things like that. It's it's not just the job, it's that it's it's very difficult to be angry at somebody that's your friend. That's really what it boils down to. And you try to, to the extent possible. And and I recognize sometimes that's just not possible. There are just difficult people in the world that just will not will not approach you in that fashion. But if you're friends first, you can resolve just about anything in my experience.
Thank you.
Mr. Ross, did you say you actually were raising your voice?
Screaming, Commissioner Ross screaming at each other in my office to this, to the extent where people are wondering what we were doing and why we were screaming at each other. Yes.
Already you've gotten kind of a reputation as being a very calm and intemperate person. So that that image is not quite clicking with what I'm seeing and hearing right now.
And that's when it's effective, when you have that reputation of being calm. Losing it, if you will, can be very effective. It can be, it can be the exclamation point to make people understand you're really serious, if it's necessary. And again, I would say he started it.
I'd like to follow up this, that.
Sure.
I really feel like you're on the right track, that people need to have a personal connection with you before they can work with you well. But I think that I think Richard Lewis has done a pretty good job of making people feel appreciated and a part of the team. And I really, really want to see that continue. And so concretely, what are what are your steps as you're going through the first three months or the first six months or the first nine months? What, how are you gonna, how are you gonna concretely do this in this building? Can you give me some ideas that you might have that maybe haven't been tried before by Richard or past?
Well, whether they haven't been tried, obviously I wouldn't know that. But I can say what I will do, and that is to be not just visible, but I don't I don't think I've ever heard somebody applying for a high administrative position that didn't say they had an open door policy. I don't. I think that's not enough. You have to go to where the people are to develop those kind of relationships. You have to be walking the halls. You have to talk to people when when you see them in the halls instead of just nod and pass them by. That's when you can build those kind of relationships that you're talking about is to to meet those, meet them where they are instead of forcing them to come to you to tell you they've got a problem. Because that's generally what 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 when people come to the offices when they've got a problem. Meet them when they don't have a problem. Meet them in their offices, understand what they do before the problems arise, and then they're more comfortable approaching you when when the need occurs. So in the first 90 days, in fact, that the I was asked that question downstairs. I would anticipate going and trying to meet every employee possible, not just the department heads, but the people that actually report to them, you know, in an informal basis, what's, tell me what's going on? What what do you do again for the county? You know, how do you like your job? What do you need to do your job that you don't have? You know, those kinds of things. And make sure people understand that you may not be able to give them everything they want. But if you at least listen to what they say they need, they've been heard. And maybe at some point in time, you can give that to them. Yep.
Mr. Longer? Two, three, six, and twelve.
Well, I think I just really talked about my first, first, you know, say, three months would be the goal would be to meet as many people as possible and then understand not just what people, how people say county government works, but to see it, you know, to see it as firsthand as possible. Beyond that, I think I think an intermediate goal would be to understand the finances as much as I possibly can. What's, you know, it's it's, I'm reasonably certain that that Leland is not unlike most every other county that has law enforcement as its primary draw on its on its budget. Understanding that aspect of of the county's budget, I think, would be something I'd want to have done in certainly in the first six months. And then on a year's goal to have, by that time, I'll be presenting, you know, the next probably the first budget that I'll be presenting to you as as commissioners and to have that if you will, have my mark on it.
How familiar you are with county budgeting?
In Calhoun, I was on both the internal and external budgeting teams. I was not I was not involved with the, in in Calhoun, I was not involved, like I am in in Northport, with the monitoring of the budget. I was more involved in the establishment of the budget to determine, you know, what the revenue targets were and verifying that those were reasonable. And then and then allocating oftentimes how the how the cuts would affect other affect all the departments. So.
Mr. Longer? Going back to our first interview, three police departments in one bill.
Yes, sir.
That kind of speaks to conflict management, capital projects, labor negotiations, open meetings, I mean, that's, that was a whole big job. Okay. Was there any setbacks trying to get all three of those people, the state, county, and city? Together?
There were a number of setbacks, yes. I can remember being in a meeting where a county commissioner called me out personally, saying, oh, how can, if if Marshall, the city of Marshall can't afford to collect its Christmas trees at the end of the Christmas season? How can you possibly be in a in a joint operation with with, you know, two other departments? And it frankly took all I could to to not come across the table and punch him out, but obviously you can't do that in a public meeting. It was, it was very disheartening to had to be to be treated so cavalierly by by an elected official when we were trying to accomplish a a a serious collaborative effort. And 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 basically, the problem was he didn't have the the foresight to see how it could be financially managed with, you know, because it was going to be a Michigan State Police Post as well. The contribution that the state would make to that was much more significant than I think he even imagined. So that was the only, the only time where I really felt like we can't make this happen if I've got that kind of attitude at the county level. And originally, the county had decided to opt out. And the real change was the a change in sheriffs that that was fully supportive of the idea, whereas his predecessor had not been. So.
Dealing with police officers and department heads, sure, that's very difficult, isn't it?
I wouldn't say it's difficult. It's actually something that I enjoy. It's something that I enjoy. I've represented law enforcement my entire career.
Good job, thank you.
So so again, I'm sorry for these positions, but I let's go to pretend land and then sitting out there, four of your former associates, employees, directors, they're sitting there drinking coffee, they're talking about working with you. What do you think they're gonna say or if I could ask, what is what is their discussion about you, their view of you? And what do you think it'd be and is it different than what you would hope it would be? Could you comment on that? Again, I know it's a great question, but I'm trying to, I'm trying to drill down on some issues, so.
I can think of several. I think, for example, I was talking with the village president in Northport about how we would, you know, what if I, what if I do succeed in 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 this position? And they have to replace me in Northport, what what would they do? And the one thing he said to me is, you make me a better leader. And that really kind of took me aback. And what do you mean by that? Says, well, when we sit down and talk, you make me confident in my decisions. That you give me the I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I think it was, you give me belief in myself that I can then go out and run a meeting after we've essentially pre-gamed the meeting and discussed how how it could and should be handled. I think my previous boss in in Calhoun County would say that I take on too much. That I have a difficult time delegating. And a lot of that was because in the position of corporation counsel, I really didn't have anybody to delegate to. There was no one else that had that that had my training and expertise, my legal background, that could deal with with legal issues. And what she would say is, well, you need to recognize those things that 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 are really not corporation counsel issues, but can be dealt with by somebody else. I think that's what she would say about me. I think the individual that you asked me about, the the county elected official that we were, we screamed at each other, he'd say that 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 he's he's that I'm the best corporation counsel he's ever worked with, that 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 again, he that I was able to lead him to places he didn't want to go. And to make him comfortable with decisions that others expected of him, that he didn't want to make. I think he'd say that. And then another department head that I worked with frequently in Calhoun County was the director of the Land Bank Authority. And she she has said to me that now that I'm gone, a lot of times they'll sit in meetings and ask, well, what would Jim do? What would Jim be telling us right now? And I think that they so I think that they viewed my contributions to their department as 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 significant. But I think I taught them rather than told them. So they were able to do things on their own with without my involvement. I think that's what they would tell you. So that was a really hard question.
Sorry.
But I appreciate the opportunity to to talk about that.
Thank you.
One thing you said reminded me a lot of of when Chet started here in the county building. And instead of just saying, I'm in my office, there's an open door, come see me. We teased him a lot about carrying his coffee cup up and down. Exactly what he do because, you know, get a cup of coffee and but he went from office to office and and got to know our colleagues and we really did appreciate that approach that he took. And I I had to apologize because I, we tried to keep be questioning the same and I had, I had not to ask the previous candidate about the the separation of 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 being being in finance and and wanting to run our finance. But I will step over and ask you, so we do use our corporate counsel.
Of course.
And, but I I know that you yourself bring a lot of the county knowledge already. So I guess the question would be, would you have any problems still leaning upon our corporate counsel for decisions?
I was asked that question when I came to Northport and I think they were hoping that that I would say, you know, you don't need a village attorney, you don't need that expense anymore. But but I made it clear that there were, there were times when then that I had to recognize that I was the client and not the lawyer. There are plenty of times. In fact, the issue that that Chairman Wessel mentioned, I had was on the phone with the village attorney yesterday, saying, here is where I think we are, we need to go. What's your advice? You know, is this, is this something that that you would be able to pursue for us? Is is my direction good, bad, indifferent? I so I think what would end up happening, there would be plenty of times when when you might otherwise access corporation counsel, you wouldn't need to do so because it's something that is routine. I've done it 100 times and I understand it and I don't need to go get advice for that. But there'll be plenty of times. And and I happen to know, I think, everyone in the office, I'm, I'm pretty sure you use the the Cole, Cole Stoker. You know, I've known Bonnie Totsky for, I don't know, 30 years. So so I would have absolutely no problem recognizing the times when they need to be independently advising both me and the and the county.
Okay, second part of my question then would be, do you still read periodicals from upon the changing of of the county laws? Still, do you still follow all that?
The the best way to do that is typically through Michigan Legislative Service One, through the Michigan State Bar Journal, through the through the Michigan Municipal Law Section of the State Bar. So yes, I I do that. And they're also probably the most immediate are to be involved in the the listservs through the various Michigan, Michigan Association of Counties, to be involved in those listservs to, you know, that that and and it would, it's primarily the the administrators that have have their own group. And I find those to be very helpful.
So you retired here in Oregon? Yeah. Came up in 2023, right?
Uh, well, we 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 purchased a condo in 2020. But I actually moved here full time in 2023, October of 2023, correct?
So I'm just kind of curious, you know, your relationship with the community that you generated in that year or so that you've been here and knowing that you'll come into this job with a huge amount of knowledge and experience to hit the David Brennan. What issue do you think you might be spending quite a bit of time on as an administrator for us in your first couple of months on the job?
Well, I I think that I will be concerned with what you tell me to be concerned with to start. But I think the area that that really needs substantial concern and and the substantial attention right now is attainable housing. If you can't have people living in the community that they work. Living in the community that they work. You've got a real problem. When, when, when you can't, when the restaurants can't afford to have, have servers. Uh, because they can't, they have to drive, you know, fifty, sixty miles to, to, from where they live. Or even, even the twenty miles to get to the near side of Traverse City. Particularly in weather like this, they can't stay open. We've been, it was the one thing that they wanted me to work on in Northport and it's been a very, very difficult task. But the thing that I think needs to happen is there needs to be someone. That starts talking to the municipalities that, that are, that are involved with. The water and sewer extension, the, the, the water and sewer systems. To convince them that, that they need to, they need to have some capacity for that type of housing. That's one of the big obstacles right now. So that would be, that would be one thing, I think, again, with your permission only that I'd be, that I'd want to work on.
I, it seems like you came here to be retired or son-in-law retired. Why do you want to do this?
First of all, that's not really accurate. We came here, I came here for a job opportunity to, I came here to live for a job opportunity. Had that opportunity not arisen, I would still be the corporation counsel in Calhoun County. In fact, I had met with, with the, with the county administrator and we had worked on a, on the transition planning for. I would, would, would still be there. But that opportunity arose and the reason I wanted to do it is because I'd spent thirty-five years being the advisor to government. I wanted to be the decision maker. That's why I came to Northport. And the job facilitated the ability to move here, not the other way around. We were looking for a place that we, you know, that we could come up anytime we wanted. And it was extremely difficult. We, every time we had an opportunity to, to buy a house, we either got outbid or, or, or there were already. Six offers in. But, but like I said, the ability to, to, to work up here facilitated the ability to live here. And, and. So two things, I have to work to live, to continue to live here and that's fine with me. But it's a job that I can do and that's why I want to do it. That's the bottom line. It's a job that I can do and that's why I want to do it.
Are we ready to let the, the new commissioners ask questions? Emily, you want to start down there again?
Yeah, let me wake up my computer here. First, thanks. Thanks an awful lot. And again, thank, thank you commissioners for giving us a front row seat in this and, and participation. You'd already mentioned, Mr. Dyer, that. My interpretation is that there would be an opportunity for some monetization of your legal skills. It, I understand, you know, you're differentiating between really. On the subject matter. I wondered. Are there advantages to having a corporate council that resides near, because this is. Close to your background near and is familiar with the community as opposed to hiring a large. Downstate firm that represents counties throughout the state? The one, I, I would say yes and no. You're really talking about a very, very specific specialty. Particularly county government. And in, in most, for example, the Michigan Township Association. There's, there's basically one law firm in the state that represents probably. If, if not eighty percent, certainly at least that percentage of the, the townships in, in the state. Even though some of them may have their own township attorneys, they will turn to that, the Baucham firm in Kalamazoo. Almost every school system in the state of Michigan is represented by the Thrun's, the Thrun Law Firm out of Lansing. And because that specialty is, is so specific. Attorneys that want to do that kind of work tend to flock to those, those three firms, the coal firm. The, the interesting thing, cities tend to not have that kind of, that kind of thing, although one of my former partners is the. General Counsel for the Michigan Municipal League. But there's no firm that represents, that generally is the, the firm to go to, that cities go to. Largely because many of them have their own in-house attorneys. So the disadvantages, you do tend to not have the, the actual. Expertise that's necessary. But having someone local has its own advantages as well. And if the right person was or firm was present, that'd be something that, that we'd have to consider. You know, as we.
Effort to give my colleagues a little more time and not you, Gwen. I'll ask you just one more question. What do you do for fun?
Oh, I'm a soccer referee. I do a lot of that, a lot of that. I play guitar and a buddy of mine down in Marshall and I, we. In fact, we've got a couple of shows scheduled down in Marshall and he comes up here every once in a while. We got to play during Uncaged at the Yard and Lake for a nice hour-long set. I do that. And I, I have several memberships and several service and social clubs. That I get a lot of, a lot of enjoyment out of.
I'm thinking senior citizen Christmas party anyways.
No, no, no. One of the reasons, one of the real big reasons we came here is my wife and I like to be outside in all kinds of weather and there are just.
If you came to the right place.
You know, I don't know how many, how many trails are there between the, the Sleeping Bear Dunes National Lakeshore and the. The conservancies up here, they're just, they're just everywhere. So, so that, 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 that we do a lot of as well.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Rick Ravens, District One. Doing a little homework on you. Uh, in your legal field, you've practiced in what, eighty-two out of the eighty-three counties for government? Give or take. You're familiar with pretty much the whole state.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't claim to have represented much of the, much of the UP. Although I had to spend a, a lot of time up there when one of the plaintiffs I was dealing with was incarcerated at Ken, at Ken Ross. So, yeah, I had to come up to the UP quite often, but.
Um, my question is, is what I've learned is being up here commissioner two years ago and having two years off is. It's gotta be a team effort. Uh, board is only as good as the administrator. Administrator is only as good as the, the team.
I wouldn't.
And we have to work together, respect each other. What is, if you accept this job, what would you expect out of the board for you to be effective and make, make this operation flow?
Well, a couple of things. I, I would hope that we would develop. And each of us a personal relationship that we would be, feel. More than capable of contacting each other when there were issues that needed to be addressed. But one thing for sure is, is, is regular meetings with the board's leadership, usually. Usually that's the board chair and the board, the board vice chair to set the agenda, that kind of thing. Honestly, one of the things that, that we found, and this is gonna sound a little crazy, well, maybe not, but. We would go out and have a drink after every, after every one of our board meetings. Any of the commissioners that, that felt, that wanted to attend, we'd go out and. The only deal was, the only deal was you couldn't talk business. You couldn't talk business. Do anything else, you couldn't talk business. And, and that had a, that went a long ways towards. Cementing very long-lasting relationships and, and trusting relationships that. Where we were able to get things done because of that.
Thank you.
Steve Yoder here, District Seven. Question I asked the previous candidate kind of pretty much got answered in a couple of different ways. Question I would have for you as far as, you know, we've, for the last couple of years, there's been a lot of transition. You know, with the finance department, different things like that. What would you rate your financial background or experience as far as in that department? Where you could, you know, offer expertise or just help with that transition and, and keep it smooth, I guess.
I think I would say this, that I, I would not be the subject matter. In, in fact. If you offered me the job as finance director, I'd say you're out of your mind. That is not my area of expertise. But my area of expertise is to facilitate that finance director getting what they need to do their job. For lack of a better term, protecting them from the political fallout that might, that might be present. Or inherent in their job. You know, that if there's a mistake, I take the hit, not the finance director. You know, I'm the one that's responsible ultimately for what, what that person does and you're never gonna see me saying. Pointing the finger towards somebody downstream from me in the organizational chart. Uh, that's, I think, what a leader does and that's. How you avoid those kind of, those, that, that kind of disruption in. You know, in an organization is to be a good leader.
My, my follow-up question is. Kind of with dealing with different departments, which you've had a lot of experience in that, how would you, I guess, what do you? How do you handle communication, conflict? Between different departments, the board, if there's disagreement or how do you come to a resolution on that and how do you communicate that, I guess?
Well. In, in some sense, you asked, you, you answered your own question is, is, is communication is, is the most important thing. For example, in, in, in Northport. I, every, every meeting have a fairly lengthy. Two or three page report of what's of the major things that, that occurred since the last meeting. Or even follow-ups on things that are, that are ongoing that get communicated to, to everyone. Not just, not just my board, but to the general public as well, because that's, that's important. In, in today's day and age, you, you do, some of that stuff needs to, needs to happen with social media. You know, if you're, if you're talking about communicating to the public. Communicating internally is. I guess a lot of times that depends on, on whether or not you're talking about communicating. Communicating a decision just generally, that's, that's typically done by email, but. I think the most difficult thing is communicating. A decision to somebody that does not favor the direction that. You've decided to take. Uh, that requires a one-on-one conversations. It requires those conversations to occur before the decision is made and after the decision is made. Explaining why your view didn't, didn't prevail. I think that's important. The other thing that's very, that I find very difficult to do and one thing that they, 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 that I, that I heard when I took the job in Northport. Is you need to make sure you communicate equally. You know, everybody has to, has to get the, everybody has to get the message. Well, that's really difficult because not everybody makes contact with you in the same way. I have, I have commissioners that, that, that I get text messages from all the time and then others that I've never had a text message from. So you have to keep in mind that, all right, I've communicated that to that commissioner. Now how do I? How do I make that communication with others that, that have not contacted me directly? And it's not easy. That's, that's probably the most difficult thing is to. Is to. Is to communicate equally when you're not being accessed equally. And I don't know that I have the solution for that. I don't know that I've done it as well as I would like to in Northport. But it's something that I recognize you have to do.
Oh, my goodness. Now, everybody's asked every good question that I thought about asking, so now, you know. You know, so obviously you've got a lot of experience with contracts and county employees and.
That would be fair to say.
Interaction with department heads and like the officials. Actually, I don't have any questions.
I have a follow-up question. So I want to roll down a little bit. You had mentioned that everyone knows that we have affordable housing issue in the county and even regionally. However, we have to be careful that, I mean, raising taxes to make housing more affordable doesn't. Fights both ways. So, I mean, you mentioned municipalities with water projects that involves money. I guess I'd like to see a little more detail about how you view county government because I do see a lot of things where government can get out of the way.
Yeah, and that's.
Zoning and a big process, but as far as like the actively fundraisers participating in a problem, it, 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 it solves a problem, creates a problem at the same time. You drill down a little bit on how you fully see that relationship happening.
I think it's, I think it's more taking a, a leadership role because I, I agree that I, you know, I, in fact, one of the, one of the things when. In fact, I was talking just last weekend with the, the former colleague from, from Calhoun on. On affordable housing and her response was, oh yeah, we, we need it, we need a millage. And I'm like. That, that would be something that I think in Calhoun would be impossible to, to, to pass for that purpose. Her response was, well, we have millages for parks, we have millages for, you know, emergency services, why not housing? Well, I don't, I don't think we are at a point where people recognize that they, they can benefit from, from, from housing. They, they see it as, as provide, giving, giving something away to somebody. But I, I think the county can, can take a leadership role. In education more than anything else and, and. And you do have a role in county planning. And so those two things, I think, you know, you can take a role there. And when I say. Particularly with respect to the infrastructure issues like roads, sewer, water. A lot of times the, the, the situation is that the, the capacity is there, it's just not being used and it won't be dedicated to that. So it's not, it's not necessarily something where you would need additional, a, a, a new system or something of that nature. And, and sometimes developers are even willing to pay for those, pay for those connections. Because without them, the project just, just can't, can't exist.
Thank you. I mean, I do see a role for government, it's just less, more of an active role in helping and shaping.
Right.
Zoning issues that get in the way of, of housing situation.
Yeah, I, I would, I would see the county more as an advocate than as a, than as a. Certainly not a developer, certainly not actively owning property necessarily, but that, that, that's. Left more to the real, true local, the local municipalities, deal with that.
Mr. Dyer, we, now it's your turn to ask us any questions if you want. I didn't tell you that Mr. Janet is online from Marquette.
I saw he was there.
Yes, it's five degrees here. So it's pretty chilly.
I would imagine so.
Do you have any thoughts or questions?
I, I, I. I would have a lot if there was more time. But I guess the one question that I would have, you've asked me, what are my? Thirty-sixteen or, you know, thirty, ninety-year long goals, what are yours for this position? What, what do you expect of a, of a administrator? What do you want? Because I think that what you want is something that I both can and want to fill. But I'd like to hear that directly.
When's when's ready to tell you?
We need someone who can work with all of the department heads that report to the administrator and those that don't, the elected officials. And can build build a team. We've struggled with some of that and it's and it's a challenge. You have elects and you have department heads and you have all the people who work under the same conditions. So we need someone who can effectively build a team. We have a team. We have incredible employees that work with that.
Yeah, follow up just really just make the machine run smoothly. I mean, that's really, you know, we're not this this board, I'm sure the incoming board does not want to be the day to day runner of this of this business. That's the reason we have an administrator. So to take care of the day to day business to make sure that the team and machine runs smoothly. And I guess it's both a wish and an answer. Then it's a, to take this position, you'll have to remind us to stay in our lanes. This is not a individual county process. I have my job to do, let me do it. And so it's it's both, A, make sure that people work together, the process is working well, and make sure we don't interfere, we don't mess. Because that's that's an issue you'll have to deal with. There's too much individual mental people taking on causes and and you'll have to be able to deal with that. But I I think at the end of the day, we'd like to, and our reports back there, we'd like to not be in the paper as much as we have. I'm not going to be part of that process, but the others will. We'd like to just be known as running the business of county smooth, efficiently, quietly, in harmony with the community, in harmony with all the people, and in harmony on this bench. So that's what we want. At least I can only speak for myself, but I I think that's a universal wish to provide these services effectively economically and in harmony. That's an easy job.
Unless anybody disagrees with Doug.
We work really hard, you see our financials. We work really hard to to keep Leland County as financially stable as it is. We pay forward to BURS. We've been good to our employees. We've we've just worked really hard to get us here. And we've had to remind ourselves to stay on track with policy and procedures and sometimes things get lost in the fact that someone will say, well, let's just do something this way. But what's so important is that if this board commissioner says that it needs to move forward, then it needs to move forward the way the board commissioner says it needs move forward. So and also, it's really important for our negotiation that we use our negotiating team. And that the administrator doesn't go outside of the negotiating team and negotiate with departments or elected officials outside of our negotiating team. We have used that northward with our to do that. I just think that's extremely important, or we're going to get off base quickly. So those would be my comments.
Anything else? Yes, Jim.
I I hope the one thing you bring to the table, and I'm sure you're going to, is ownership. You come in, it's not just a job. You have thirteen people in this room right now besides our Zach, our newspaper reporter over here. Is given more than two years, ten years, or twenty years to live around town. You know, just to I I'm sure you will do well. Thank you.
I just don't want to be surprised. So if there's a problem on the horizon, you know, communications. And that's you're in a position to see with every department, every department head, every employee, you see it more than we do. So if you see something that's coming, you know, the board needs to know about. I don't like surprises. Anybody else?
I I think you're one of your biggest challenges is going to be to integrate a new fi- new finance department in with the budgeting process. And the sooner you get started on that, I think that smoother next year will go.
I guess for me, the biggest thing is, I want an administrator that is forthright with the board, you know, says it how is it, says it how it is, knows how to find compromises and work with everybody in that sense. I think that's very valuable, that nothing sugar coated. I'm not a guy that likes to sugarcoat things, say it how it is, and let's deal with it, you know, so. You know, obviously, that, you know, at the board, every, you know, everything has to be, you know, dealt with in a fashionable manner, you know, but I'm much, you know, I just want an administrator that's honest, forthright. Yeah, and just and just deals with the issues at hand.
Mr. Dyer, thank you very much. We're going to take a ten minute break or so, and then we're going to convene with Chuck. And we're going to process what we've learned today. And maybe make some decisions, maybe not, but we'll decide that as a group. And we're going to listen to input from the new new commissioners as well. So thank you so much for coming.
Thank you for the opportunity. Appreciate it very much.
Can we take a ten minute break? Chad, are you fine with that schedule?
Yep, that's fine.
We take a ten minute break, please.
What what time zone are you in?
Yeah.
I did, right there.
Commissioner Ross?
Yep, I voted for Mr. Smith. I put Zach in.
Yeah, Zach wants this job, doesn't he?
Was he a write-in?
They're gonna have one more.
Did you write?
That'd be a spray.
It would be a spray.
Very good things we had.
Your name? Oh, yeah.
We do possess what is part of the record.
That's a choice. Okay, so let's bring this back. We invited to stay in the audience and we'll hear from you in a minute. Chad, Richard?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, what's your question?
Richard has each commissioner and each commissioner elects recommendation on a three by five card. He has not reported out on that yet. After he does that, it's my understanding that we are going to hear from the commissioner elects. And then we will have our discussion. That's my recollection of what we agreed to do.
And I have the one o'clock page.
Yes. Does that work, Chad?
Yes, and I believe you have a sample motion. Word in on a sample motion.
Yes, we have it.
Yes, so you know the next step in the procedure.
We've got five here from commissioners. Did someone not sign their name to one? Or do you know?
Oh, I didn't sign my name. Was I supposed to?
Yeah.
Yes. Do you know which ones you're writing? I know you hold it in your hand.
Yes.
Okay. Yep, because it is a part of the record, how they chose. All right. One, two, three, four, five, six, and I'll give these to you when I'm done. It seems like all the all five, all six of you have selected Mr. Dyer. This man was choice from the others. I've got a Mark, a Mark, and a Jim Dyer. So, that's what you're, and they don't have to put their names on there. So, because they're not elected. They're not public.
Well, I got three.
Yeah.
Yes, I don't know where, okay. As it relates to the staff comments that we have, you have a Mr. Dyer's the right choice. Another one has Mr. Brown as being the choice. Let's see here, this one here. They just gave comments, so they didn't say what's going with Mr. Brown. They said straightforward, approachable, financial background, may not have government experience, but willing to learn. Mr. Dyer quieter, but direct, probably can steer the ship as he has the background in government and politics, but not sure he'll deal with all the inter-office departments and drama. Unsure how approachable he will be as he appears very reserved. And we're gonna get one more thought. So, that's what we have. Here it said Mark Brown is a better choice for administration. He is clear, concise, changed tire, I think, talks in circles, and will never make a decision. We don't need the beliefs, we need a leader. And this one's dire. So, between these four, it's a split. There you go.
So, we think we agreed to have each of the new commissioners offer us whatever comment they'd like to make. And then we will have discussion and decide what we want to know. So, who wants to speak to us?
Again.
You're gonna have to come up to the table.
Sure. It's pretty cool having two candidates like that, that aren't like from the same background. I mean, it's, I like that. That's kind of good. I put down Mr. Brown. But, boy, I could have flipped coin, honestly. And I don't need to say anything. I mean, we've all had our comments, and I think ours are gonna be the same as what you guys, what each one of those guys brought to the table. Yeah, yeah, you, yeah. There's two, two guys that I'd take either way to the finish line, honestly. So.
Well, I picked Mr. Brown because I think he's more diversified. And, you know, everything is about county government, but everybody we deal with is not county government. So, I think he brings a different perspective, and that might be good. I also think he's a team builder. He's a coach. That's how I see him. So, that was just, that was my decision. I mean, that's how I saw it. I see him as bringing more to the table than the simple coast toker mentality. We gotta move forward. We do that with diversity.
I guess. Is that me? Yeah, it was, they both were extremely well. I voted for Mr. Dyer, just, I felt like his background, just being able to bring everybody together, putting a team together, really attracted me. However, you know, with Mr. Brown's, I feel like he's very qualified as well. And just, you know, that outside background, very open, willing to learn, really attracts me as well. But I just felt like Dyer just, yeah, might have pulled ahead with me on that, and just the fact that he, just his experience in pulling people together, willing to work with everybody, and just one-on-one with individuals, I think is what we need, you know? But either one, I think, would be qualified to do that. But that's my input.
Well, after sitting through this a couple of years ago, this one was a tough one today. Chad did an excellent job on providing us with some excellent candidates. I thank him for that. Like you said, it's tough. I did go with Dyer, but I could have went either way. I think with Dyer, I think he can take us to the next level that we need to go. But I will emphasize to you guys, use the board up there, the current board and the one that's gonna follow you. It doesn't matter which one of these guys we pick. Unless we give, act as a board and just give them directions and stay in our own lane, it's never gonna work up here. You know, we're hired administrator, it's their job to run the day-to-day, like Doug said. And that's what we gotta emphasize on January first as a new board, that we give direction and we let them run the show up here. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. And I know the board for you being here. And thank you. I know the candidates did as well. Appreciate it. This time we'll open it up for board discussion.
We had two really excellent candidates. If Mr. Brown had applied last summer, he'd probably be here. Frankly, we hired someone with no municipal experience once before, and there's a long, there is a learning curve, no matter how smart you are. And I feel like Mr. Dyer can just step in and start to do the job. Of course, there will be a learning curve, but he doesn't, but he knows municipal government. And it sure doesn't hurt to have another lawyer around. He's seen.
There's differing opinions on that particular situation.
You know, when he first, in his first interview, he was so solemn. But then I saw the people from Northport come in and sit with him in the back, and they were all smiling, laughing. I know there are many sides to this, to this man. So, I wanna thank both of them, and I wanna thank Mr. Brown for stepping up that I agreed to hire Mr. Dyer.
So, a follow-up on Commissioner, but really, I mean, in listening to you folks, who are gonna have to work with him, not me, but I don't hear a strong, I mean, there's endorsements for Dyer and around it, but what I'm hearing is that either one would be a good thing, that this candidate will come in with a new board that seems a welcome, either one of them and their skill set. And so, that's good to hear. And I'll echo, we have two great candidates. It was forty-nine fifty. I mean, I agree, I like that idea of the outside look coming in. But I think in the county where it's at right now, the stability of someone who knows what they're doing is extremely important to help you guys with a whole new board to have a good, like, launch with the right people. And I guess we're, I don't, we're open discussion, but if we're discussing, we normally have a motion to discuss. So, if, I would like to move that James Dyer, we tentatively offer the position of Leonon County Administrator, and that Chairman Wessel and Vice Chairman Retro are authorized to negotiate an association with Mr. Janik and propose employment agreement subject to approval by the County Board of Commissioners.
Support.
Discussion.
We have a date on that, before the first of the year?
It is, Mr. Chet's, Chet's might have some more information for us on that. Before we open it up for discussion, Chad, you wanna talk to us?
Yes. That's a very good question, and I talked to Matt Norfolk last night to make sure we're on the same page. It depends what the terms of the contract are, and it depends on the candidate. This board, if a contract is approved by this board, it can only be a one-year contract. If the candidate wishes to wait till the first of January, then next year's board could, in theory, give up to a three-year contract. So, that'd be a part of negotiation, since today's December twelfth already. But I guess that's a topic of discussion with the candidate and the chairman and vice chairman how to proceed. But legally, there are options. I know the candidates, when I talked to them prior to this round, stated that they prefer to have a contract by the end of this year, from a legal perspective, obviously. But in theory, the board could wait until next year, if the candidate wants to wait, and offer a more lengthier contract. Also, the other option is this board could agree to terms of one-year contract, and anytime next year, the board could reopen that and extend that to a period beyond that one year. Typically, county administrator contracts are three years with an opt-out clause. That's a contract I had, that's what the previous administrator before me had, and that's what the current, or the administrator last year also had, a three-year contract with an opt-out clause, that both sides can advocate if they wish to leave during that term of that three-year contract. So, really, it's up to the candidate and the board how they wish to proceed. Can it be done by December thirty-first? Yes. But the terms can only be one year. If it's after December thirty-first, it could be up to three years. But both contracts have opt-out clauses.
I mean, one of the advantages of getting it done this year and having someone in place is then the incoming board would have a six-month look at this incoming person and be able to decide if they want to extend it. I mean, I think it's, you know, three years is, like you say, you've got ninety days out of the way. So, it's hard to commit to three years, you actually see how it's gonna work. So, you can have the best of both worlds, get it done this year, and let the next board decide after working with them for sixty-six months, or whatever term they determine is adequate to get, to get comfortable enough to offer that extension.
I can tell you, we just, I just completed the search in Branch County on the Indiana border, and the board of the candidate agreed to a one-year contract that that will be subject to renewal next year in 2025. And that board is committed to exploring the option of a three-year contract. So, kind of the same situation. After August first, current boards, this year can only offer one-year contracts.
So, you're wondering about a date. As you already know, we shared with you on Tuesday morning, we're gonna need one more meeting before the year-end, and it's mainly for budget items. But we could add this to that meeting, so that'd be on December the thirtieth. We can approve a contract if you have it negotiated. We'll include that on that particular agenda, so you're here. We're gonna, if that's how you want to do it, in fact, we're probably gonna have a request. So, three of you can sign that on Tuesday night. So, you can have it. If you don't want to do that, right, then we just don't do anything. But it's there for your options.
And Chad, that works for you, right?
Yeah. So, the process will be, assuming you pass your motion, then I will contact the candidate this afternoon, contact Chairman Wessel and Vice Chairman Retro and start the process. I'm pretty confident we can wrap it up quickly. And then what I'll do is send the terms of the contract to Coast Stoker to draft the official document. And they know that's coming. I worked with them on numerous contracts this past year, and I'm sure there can be a pretty quick turnaround on it. I don't think it's that complicated. You received last week's sample of two contracts that Coast Stoker did this past year for me, what the terms are. And so, I'm optimistic that, assuming you pass the motion and that the candidate can agree to contract terms, which I'm confident will happen, that yes, you could have a signed agreement by the end of this year. And then next year's board can review that at some point and determine how they wish to proceed. They may wish to extend it, or they can simply wait till next year in December and make the decision about the future employment. Or they can do it anytime during 2025.
All we request is that if we can have the agreed-upon contract agreement by December the twenty-seventh, which is a Friday, if we have it that way, we can include it in the packet, the board packet that would go out that afternoon.
They will do that if that's what the board decides to do.
And then, I'm sorry, just one more thing. Once verbal contract terms are approved, I would send it out to all commissioners, so you'd have time to look at those terms. And then Coast Stoker would draft the legal document, but you would know what the terms are beforehand.
Come to all commissioners at the same time that goes to legal counsel.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, or for.
This one is possible.
We do have a motion. Are we ready to vote?
Call the vote.
All those in support of the motion, so let's do a rule call.
Don't call the vote. Let me have the vote. I'm calling the vote. So, withdraw.
Commissioner Retro?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Chairman Wessel?
Yes.
Commissioner Elvair?
Yes.
Commissioner Lautner?
Yes.
Commissioner Worf?
Yes.
Six-zero.
Thank you. We ended up a lot better than what we started off.
Thank you. And we do now have public comment? Anybody in the audience?
Yeah. I wanna clarify something. Has nothing to do with today's meeting. Has to do with Tuesdays. After I left here, I did some homework, because I don't want the residents of our county to be alarmed that sheriffs are taking guns away. I made some phone calls and to another sheriff, it's a friend of mine, and I mentioned to him what was going on, and he says, huh, funny, I just had lunch with that person, the sheriff that was a new female down in Washington County. She is not taking guns away at all. She is going to, like most departments are nationwide, put social workers in the patrol car. She also went to say that her new undersheriff is a very conservative person, just the opposite of her. She admits that she's very liberal. But she says between the undersheriff being conservative and her being liberal, she feels that it's gonna bring the department together, and they will have a well effect. But I didn't want the word getting out that sheriffs are taking guns away. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Merry Christmas.
Any commissioner comment?
Merry Christmas.
Thank you, everybody, for coming and getting it done and working through the process.
Right, I think it's gonna be a pretty smooth transition between Richard and Mr. Dyer and more. I'm looking forward to things going smoothly.
And I'd like to thank Richard for, I know we started off, but Richard, thank you for leading us here. Motion to adjourn?